I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, March 13th. And if I can have everyone's raise for the flag. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Thank you.
Mr. Gangona?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. A notice to the audience, if anyone would like to speak to any matter on the agenda today, please fill out a card and pass it up here to staff and we'll be more than happy to entertain your request. The first order of business is going to be presentations and I have the honor to introduce the honorable supervisor, David Canepa, and he will be updating us on an event that is coming. Honorable Canepa, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I truly miss being up there with you, I really do. And so, I just want a couple of things. First of all, I want to keep you updated what's going on. I know Ms. Martel sits on the board proceeding. I sit personally on the health plan of San Mateo and we had some exciting news happen recently. We appropriated about $611,000 for 39 long-term care beds. And as you know, Seaton goes as Daly City goes, and Daly City goes as Seaton goes. But I think that's really encouraging. The second thing I wanted to tell you, and I wanted to in particular thank the mayor and council, we conducted workshops in Daly City as well as other cities within the district. And what we did was, it was on elder abuse. And so, for many in the audience who don't know, someone who suffered elder abuse was really bad, was Mickey Rooney. Mickey Rooney, the actor. And so, we had the Department of Aging provide workshops. Workshops were very informative and well-attended. But I wanted to come today to invite all of you to District 5 together. And the title of the event is Food, Fun, and You. And I know Mr. Buena Ventura loves a good meal. But it's March 18th, it's at Jefferson High School. And so, we have about 40 tables. It's a resource fair. So, from San Mateo County Alert to which is the Office of Emergency Service, to the Health Service, these are just resources for our residents as well as a program of various dancers. So, we have Irish dancers, Peruvian dancers, Burmese dancers. But as you know, politics can be somewhat tiresome. So, this is not an event about speeches, but rather just a community get-together for all the cities in my district. But I just want to commend the council for all your wonderful work. I watch your meetings. They're informative, at the same time, very entertaining. So, continue the great job. Mr. Mayor, I know you have a busy agenda, but thank you for the opportunity to address this with the council. And I'll leave these on the back for you.
May I say something, Mr. Mayor? Supervisor Canepa, let me just say, thank you for coming before us. You know, when you were about to leave, I said that I'm not going to miss you because really you will always come back. And you have proven that time and time again, you're still very active in Daly City and the other cities as well. But I see you a lot with your programs, especially with the elder abuse. So, the audience should know, he has been very open to discussing Daly City in particular. He's invited people to come to his office. He has this open-door policy. He talks about the county funds. He's very open and willing to help in any way he can. So, that's what I truly appreciate, is that we can come to you for our problems. Sometimes you can help, sometimes you can't. I understand that, that you have demonstrated a genuine sincerity in wanting to really help people in Daly City. You haven't forgotten that. That I truly appreciate. Thank you, Mr. Canepa.
Thank you, Mr. Gangona. You're fully coming? Gangona. I was looking over to my right, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Thank you Supervisor for actually doing an event right in the heart of Daly City and at Jefferson High School. And I think it's really something that we need to bring everyone together, not only from Daly City, from the other jurisdictions that you cover, and to bring everyone all together with just, you know, the diversity that we have around the northern part of San Mateo. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And you'll leave your cards there Supervisor? Thank you so much, sir. Okay. We're going to modify the agenda a little bit on a special request from Mr. Gangona. We have, Mike, why don't you go ahead?
You know, I would like to just, I'd like to introduce Malcolm. Malcolm can speak for himself. He's a volunteer with the Adventure Cycling Association and he's here to give us a brief description of what he's going to be requesting in a way of support from the council. Doesn't involve any money. Come on up, Malcolm.
Mr. Malcolm, welcome.
My name's Malcolm Gordon. Thanks for having me this evening and allowing me to address you. I'm a volunteer with the Adventure Cycling Association and I'm working on a project to designate a bicycle touring route along the west coast of the United States, from the Canadian border to the Mexican border. And the proposed route goes right through Daly City. And my job is to contact local jurisdictions and share the proposed route with them, talk to them, educate them about what this is all about, and get endorsement from the local jurisdictions to approve this route through their locality. Once that's done, this will all be packaged by Caltrans, who is leading this effort in California. And it's sent on to Washington DC to an organization called ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Officials, that's putting together a national network of bicycle routes. And these routes are actually for bicycle touring. They're not just for people out for the afternoon for a ride with their family, although certainly the route can be used for that. The purpose of this is for establishing a network of cycling routes across the country. As everybody knows, cycling is becoming more popular. It's great for your health. It's a great way to see the country and do something very physical. So, again, basically what we're asking for is the local jurisdictions to review the route. If there's any problem with the route, certainly modifications could be made. And then, an endorsement motion or letter or statement would be issued by the city. And then, that would be sent to Caltrans. And again, they're packaging this from all the different jurisdictions and sending it on to Washington for completion. There's absolutely no financial investment from the city for this. You don't have to put up signs. If you want to, that'd be great. You don't have to repay your roads. You don't have to restructure your roads. And according to legal advice, there's no liability incurred by having this route endorsed by your city. And my understanding is that I think this route through Daly City may already be signed as a bicycle route. So, really, it's not doing much else except for allowing people who want to travel this long route to be able to find their way through Daly City and carry on along the coast. I've given you a small package of information to look at with a map. And basically, the route in Daly City is less than two miles. It comes off of Skyline Boulevard, Highway 35, which is Caltrans property. It goes onto Westmore Boulevard. It jobs a short little block, turns to the left. This is going north to south. Turns to the left along Skyline Way, I believe it is. It's the Skyline Drive, excuse me. It goes along there for about a mile, 1.7 miles. It turns on a small street called Crenshaw. And then, it goes onto Palmetto Avenue, which I believe is in the city of Pacifica. So, that's really the full amount of the route. The estimation is that we're probably talking about no more than 10 people per day on average would be using this. So, it's not going to add a huge, you know, number of people riding through your streets on bicycles. So, again, what we would like to have you do is to endorse this route, issue a statement so that we can send on to Caltrans, and then they do the rest. And then, basically, this route will be available for people online and through the Adventure Cycling Association to download and do their bicycle touring. So, that's what it's all about. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Do we have any questions for Mr. Malcolm?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I wrote this the other day, actually. This is basically to stay off of that one part of Skyline between Westmore and Longtown so you don't have to hit that area where they're actually getting on the freeway or highway. So, this actually bypasses that. People are using this area just to get into the city. I don't see many people on Skyline, the highway itself. So, no, I would say we should do this and letters and send some sample letters and I can forward those to the city manager for approval.
Great. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Gangona, since you do have the letters for the resolution, then I guess we can take this up at the next. Okay. So, it's not like you needed the letters yesterday?
No, no, no. I just want to get this rolling. Great, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. All right. The next item is the approval of the minutes. And I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Some move.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, the minutes have been passed for February 27th. Next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening. First and a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay. Next item is the consent agenda.
Some move.
First and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes, okay. All right. Moving on to item number eight. Public hearing on claim to lien property at 19 Durvaldi Street. And we have staff, Ms. Campbell. And it's Madam Luffyhead. Welcome, floor is yours.
Staff is requesting a lien be placed on the property located at 19 Durvaldi Street where fees and fines totaling $15,095. The subject property was found to be a public nuisance on April 28, 2016, where modifications were made, which include removal of interior walls, a kitchen remodel, and two separate dwelling units added downstairs without the benefit of city-approved plans and inspections. An administrative order was issued to the property owner of record, Luis, excuse me, Jose Luis Hernandez, to correct the violations. To date, the violations have not been abated. A notice of violation is placed on the subject property through the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and will remain on the title to prevent sale or transfer of ownership without disclosure of the cited violations. The property owner was assessed code enforcement fees of $5,095 and penalty fines that totaled $10,000 for failure to correct the cited violations as stipulated in the administrative order. Staff is requesting that the city council adopt the resolution allowing the cost of all unpaid administrative fees and penalty fines to become a lien on the subject property. And I am prepared to answer questions at this time.
Thank you. No discussion? Okay. So, the recommended action is that, oh, I'd like to open to public hearing at this particular time. And I have no cards on this subject, so I request a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Some move.
First and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the resolution, roll call, please. Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
First and a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, the resolution passed. Okay, item number nine. Ms. Campbell, you have the floor again.
Thank you. Staff is requesting a lien be placed on the property located at 125 Shakespeare Street where fees and fines totaling $14,085. On January 4, 2007, the building division received a complaint and confirmed that a two-story addition had been built at the rear of the subject property. The property owners of record are Roy and Monalyn Armison. Mr. Armison, who is a general contractor, acknowledged he was building a two-story addition without permits. The owner submitted plans that were subsequently approved in August 2009 to legalize one story of the addition. Inspections were never scheduled and permits were allowed to be extended and reactivated several times. On January 3, 2014, the building division referred the matter to code enforcement. The property owners then obtained three consecutive permits to remove the addition, and those permits were reactivated and extended numerous times. After affording the property owners approximately nine years to voluntarily comply, the code case was presented to the Administrative Hearing Board. The board determined that the cited violation was a public nuisance and issued an administrative order. While the property owners did attempt to complete the abatement of the violations, an inspection confirmed that the abatement was incomplete. The property owners appealed the findings and order of the Administrative Hearing Board to the city council on May 23, 2016. Council adopted Resolution Number 16-84 affirming and adopting the findings of the Administrative Appeal Board. A notice of violation was placed on the subject property through the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and will remain on the title to prevent sale or transfer of ownership without disclosure of the cited violations. The property owner was assessed code enforcement fees of $4,085 and penalty fines that totaled $10,000 for failure to correct the violations as stipulated in the administrative order. Staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution allowing the cost of unpaid administrative fees and penalty fines to become a lien on the subject property. The property owners did submit a written document opposing the claim to lien. And I am prepared to answer questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. You said they submitted a document in opposition? I didn't see it. Yeah.
It says, "Don't do it."
Well, I always...
After a decade.
I always like to hear what folks have to say, because there's always two sides to a story. I do understand that it's been quite some time and I'm sorry, I didn't receive this in my package. The council members received it?
Yeah, it's on there. And they're not here?
And they're not here, all right.
I don't think.
All right, well...
Are they, they're not here?
Did anyone receive it?
Yeah, I don't have it anywhere. Sorry. That's okay. I glanced at it quickly. Thank you so much. Okay.
Can I see it?
Yeah. All I need to hear is the word "decade."
Okay. And they, they're not here today? And you know, they know they'll be here?
They're not in, they're not here.
Thank you so much. All right. On the recommended action, I'd like to now open it up to the public. And we don't have any cards at this time, so I'd like to close the public hearing at this time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
First and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the motion to adopt the resolution, roll call, please.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
First and a second? Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. All right, item number 10, public hearing on claim to lien property at 349 Bellevue. Ms. Campbell?
Yes. Staff is requesting a lien be placed on the property located at 349 Bellevue Avenue where fees and fine totaling $16,585. The subject property was found to be a public nuisance on May 26, 2016, where retaining walls and stairs were built without the benefit of city-approved plans and inspections. An administrative order was issued to the property owners of record Stan Way and Donnie Wong to correct the violations. To date, the violations have not been corrected. A notice of violation was placed on the property through the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and will remain on the title to prevent sale or transfer of ownership without disclosure of the cited violations. The property owners were assessed code enforcement fees of $6,585 and penalty fines that totaled $10,000 for failure to correct the cited violations as stipulated in the administrative order. Staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution allowing the cost of all unpaid administrative fees and penalty fines to become a lien on the subject property. And I am prepared to answer questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. On the recommended action, I'd like to open it up to the public at this time. Being I have no cards, request a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Second.
First and second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
First. Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Resolution passed.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed?
Yes, Mr. Buena Ventura.
I'd like to say something to Ms. Campbell. I know you are going to be retiring soon and I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate your work. Sometimes we have disagreed on an outcome, but I know you have a very difficult job and you have done it with really grace and just, I think, a fantastic demeanor. And I can only imagine the kind of conflicts you might get into. But I wish you the best in your retirement. I want you to know how proud I am of the job that you have done for the city of Daly City, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, we'll move on to, thank you, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Madam Luffyhead, awards and bids, contracts. Item number 11, to appropriate funds and award a construction contract for the Civic Center North ADA Improvement Projects. And I'll be turning this over to staff. And it's Runway? Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chu.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is award of a construction contract for the Civic Center North ADA Improvement Project. It's a city-owned facility and it's in need of ADA improvements. The majority of the work involves concrete and asphalt work, removal, replacement to satisfy slope requirements needed for ADA access. On February 14, 2017, five bids were received for this project ranging from $222,000 to The low bidder was Empire Engineering and Construction in the amount of $222,452. Empire Engineering and Construction Incorporated is a San Francisco company. They've been in business since 2005 and they possess the required license requirements to satisfy the contract and their references do check out. The full estimated cost of the project is $365,000. This cost also includes consulting services, construction, contract administration, the design for the project, needed inspections, and also contingency for the project. In the current budget, $200,000 was budgeted from the Civic Center Fund. An additional $165,000 will be required for this project. The city is currently working with San Mateo County to get the approval to utilize Measure K grant funds to fund a majority of the project. The Measure K grant funds could potentially reimburse the city for up to $277,000. Staff is currently working with the San Mateo County Council to finalize that agreement and that should be ready shortly to be presented to the council. It is a reimbursement amount, so the $165,000 would still be needed. In summary, staff is recommending that the council appropriate $165,000 from the Civic Center Fund and also award the construction contract to Empire Engineering and Construction Incorporated. And also to affirm the secret determination as categorical exempt. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. On the recommended action, would like to obtain a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, sure, discussion.
So, you're asking for the acceptance of the $222,000 bid and an additional $165,000? Or is that part of it?
So, there's $200,000 budgeted in the budget?
Right.
We're asking for an additional $165,000 be appropriated for a total of $365,000?
With the hopes that a significant portion of that will be refunded to us with Measure K grant funds?
That is correct. We're fairly confident...
And the work has to be done. I mean, it's ADA, it's required.
That's correct.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Any further questions? Okay, I'd like to obtain a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Your second.
Second.
First and a second? All, roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chu. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add a postscript to this particular award of contract that you have just approved. These improvements are going to help us to lease the space for the Daly City Youth Health Center across the street as well as space to San Mateo County Mental Health Services. And because the county was unable to agree to a lease, even though they... even though they wanted to be, uh, co-located, uh, at three fifty-ninety A Street, right across the street, um, without the ADA improvements, they could not authorize, um, the lease of that space. So through the efforts of Supervisor Tissier, um, before she retired, we were able to secure the guarantee of, of Measure K funding, uh, to do those ADA improvements. Um, but it will provide long-term benefit for the city because we will continue to benefit from those ADA improvements along with the long-term leases that we have successfully entered into, um, with the county for both mental health services as well as the Daly City Youth Health Center. So this was a very fortuitous opportunity for the city to be able to make these improvements and secure the Measure K funding.
That is good news, Ms. Martell. Thank you so much for sharing that. It's the collabor- collaborative effort, uh, especially to get those funds and save us some money. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is public appearances and communications. So far, I have two cards here.
Okay, come on, son.
Oh, okay. The first, uh, person to comment would be, uh, Ms. Gabriella Maxman and Ms. Pamela Diaz D. Giovanni, you'll be next. Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Um, last, uh, meeting, you remember, I had made an inquiry about why the city was paying Dugan's almost five thousand dollars. Um, and they got back to me saying that it was money that the city was holding on behalf of, uh, the Dolger Senior Center and that the Dolger Senior Center was reimbursing Dugan's. Um, and that still seems a little strange to me, um, because there's, I don't know if, uh, commissioners are employees of the city. Um, but there is a commissioner that I believe that works at Dugan's. So I, I, I'm not a professional or a legal expert, but it just seems a little strange that this type of money exchange is happening. Um, so I just wanted to call it out to your intention, 'cause it's probably deep in the weeds and not data points that you're looking at. So, um, just wanted to call that out to see if, um, maybe we can research that a little bit fo- uh, further to just make sure that there isn't something, um, that us citizens need to be concerned about. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Maxman, uh, Ms. Martell?
If I could, uh, respond to that question, because I actually read the communication that was sent to Ms. Maxman on this issue, and she has, uh, not quite understood what the response was. Um, the check was written to Dugan's in, for reimbursement of expenses incurred by the Dolger Supporters Group that, that is a nonprofit organization for which the city is the fiscal agent. Um, the reimbursement was for expenses incurred by Mr. Dugan as he, or paid upfront the costs for their fundraising event. Um, and so he submitted the receipts to be reimbursed. Uh, and so it was a reimbursable expense of the Dolger Supporters Group, not of the city of Daly City, but the supporters group, who sold tickets to the event. And so they reimbursed Mr. Dugan based on the revenue that was generated and deposited with the city for tickets to attend the event.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me, uh, there'll be no dialogue, okay? Thank you.
So that was the reimbursement. It was for the Dolger Supporters, not the Dolger Senior Center, but the Dolger Supporters Group, which helps to fund the activities of the Dolger Senior Center.
Thank you, uh...
Just a quick comment. Um, a lot of times, um, cities are fiscal agents for a variety of nonprofits, for other organizations, and, um, so all of those, the income and the expenses show up as checks that are written, but it's always good to double-check what it's about.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Christensen. All right, the next speaker is, uh, Ms. Pamela D. Giovanni. And then coming up after Ms. Pam is Lou Delcorto.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I just wanted to thank also Ms. Martell that I attended the immigration, um, Know Your Rights clinic, and, um, it was, it was done extremely well. It was very informative for any of us that if we're out in the community, you never know who you're gonna run into with circumstances, even if you're at the grocery store or anything. So I'd like to encourage everyone, I'm sure that the Vice Mayor or will let us know when the next one is upcoming, but it's extremely informative, or extremely well-attended. And thank you again, Ms. Martell, for opening up to the people on, on that Saturday. It really made them feel that they were part of the community, and they really were, um, expressing, um, even at the door, how they felt comfortable coming in here, which I was really impressed by, and that our Daly City Police, by making a public statement, really resonated, has already gone out to the community, and that they feel welcomed by our Daly City Police, and now know and feel assured and thank them, and, um, Captain Gamas and everyone, and our Manny Martinez, chief and officers, that, uh, they're here for the community, and they're not here to deport them or do anything to them or ask them questions. So thank you very much, and thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. Uh, Mr. Delcorto, and after him will be David Medrano.
Hello, my name is, uh, Mr. Delcorto, uh, Lou Delcorto, actually, and, uh, council members, I'm glad to know you. Uh, with the problem I've been finding, I've been living in this San Franc- I mean, it's Franciscan Mobile Home Park for, uh, my thirtieth year now, and I've seen some things that has kind of blown my mind. Why are they letting homes in hi- in this park that are, you know, three-quarters of a million dollar? You know, three hundred thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollar homes. And they're slowly kicking out the seniors in this park because they raised the rent so high that they can't afford to stay there. And it's, this hurts me to see these seniors people getting forced out of there because they can't afford the land lease there. And it's very sad that it's happening in this community that has really been fighting for years to move along and do the right thing, but it seems that the city hasn't been stopping as cold. That's about all I could say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is David Medrano, and after him we have Mary Ann Mann.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I also live at the Franciscan Park, uh, one sixteen Haven Drive. And our tenure's there with my parents before me have been twenty-nine years. My mom moved in there about, uh, nineteen eighty-eight, and she passed away here in, uh, two thousand and twelve, I believe. So she has all those years in. And then when they had that bond measure, the, when, uh, Link took over, fifty-three million dollars and a hundred or so of those spots were supposed to be low-income, the protected, uh, and my mom's, our place is one of them. And so I think I should have an answer, just 'cause they can't speak for themselves anymore. Why all those years, they never got the benefit of, in fact, it was quite the contrary, they raised the rent. She paid raised rents every year, and she, they never got that benefit of that bond and being on a protected, a so-called low, low, uh, income, uh, house. We, we continue to live there today. Me and my, my sister took over, and, uh, we, I've been living there since my mom died. But I think, you know, we wanna know what, uh, I, at least deserve an am- answer of what happened to them left out in the cold, and i- it's, it's under the bridge now, but I think, uh, the main reason I'd like to, uh, hold, hold them accountable, they should be held accountable, and for the main reason of not to have it happen to other people, 'cause I'm sure there's more, and it's not gonna stop until they're held accountable. So, in, in my vision, I would love to see the transfer and have them out.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, next, uh, is Mary Ann Mann, and after Ms. Mann would be, uh, Bill Stupinovich.
Oh.
Yeah, tha- that's why I, I mentioned my name.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, um, Ms. Mann, how are you?
Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm here about the regulatory agreement, which also addresses this issue of rents. And according to six, section four, paragraph H, it clearly states that the low-income sites are to be maintained, and all the steps required to do so should be taken. Um, Pat Martell is supposed to monitor this compliance and does not. Betsy Zobel, Zobel has a fiduciary legal standing, but there again, she is supposed to make sure that this is, uh, and compliance is ensured to cover the residents. Rose Zimmerman is a city attorney whose responsibility is the legal, fiduciary, ethical, and oversight of compliance issues, and this is also not being done. So my question is, who is supporting the people of the Franciscan watching out for their rights and standing by these obligations that they're supposed to be maintaining? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Okay, after Mr. Stupinovich, we have a Dave Barrett. Okay, Barrett.
My name's Bill Stupinovich. I live at Seventy-one Yacht Lane, and, uh, recently I learned that I am on a, uh, low-income protected site, which I've never been informed by management, never have had any, uh, information about getting lower rent. In fact, I, my rent's going, it's over twelve hundred. Um, but I am still able to stay there, and, uh, as you can see, many of these people, we, we lo- love this community, we wanna stay there. And we recently have a meeting, and one interesting fact was that, um, we talked about the police of low-income households. Now, this council has, uh, allocated, uh, or has worked on sixty-eight hundred mission. You spent, you go, you, uh, approve a project that, uh, seeks millions of dollars in federal and state aid, and, um, when, uh, Link came in to tell us recently about a mandatory three percent rent increase because of ongoing costs, um, we were unable to ta- uh, attend the, uh, a, a hearing about approval of a Habitat for Humanity. So it just seems, um, hypocritical or ironic that the council's trying to build housing, and at the Franciscan in two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, when I was there, this was supposed to save the community, but here we are in two thousand seventeen trying to fight to save it because many of the, uh, low-income do not have an option to stay there. They're forced to sell to the realtors who bring in the larger homes. And, uh, many of these homes, um, would, uh, be appropriate for people of, uh, the, for people with low income, and, uh, and the three-bedroom, you could have seven people. This is housing that already ex- would exist.
Thank you, Mr. Stupin- Stupinovich. Okay, we have a Dave Barrett, and then a Michael Zig- Zig- Zigante. Mr. Barrett, good evening, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is David Barrett, and I live at the Franciscan. I've lived there for over seventeen years. My opinion, Link has done a terrible job of running the Franciscan and caused us to be in a terrible financial mess, to say the least. They didn't pay our property taxes for many years, which resulted in penalties, severe penalties. New bonds had to be issued, which resulted in more debt for the Franciscan. Representatives from Link had a meeting recently stating Daly City needs to sign off on the transfer, and then it goes to the bondholders. Can we please move the transfer forward and help us get away from Link? They stated taxes have not been late in twelve months, which in my research is not true. It showed they were late just this last period, which caused the five thousand dollar penalty. They were late on two out of the three parcels. So either the information on Daly City's website is incorrect, or they are incorrect. Obviously, they want another rent increase, and every little bit helps. So if they're late on these taxes, which is causing more money out of our budget, it just puts us more into a financial mess. They recently proposed a three percent rent increase. They had a meeting. There was no vote that I'm aware, so I'm not sure how they came up allowing this three percent rent increase. The next couple days after they had the meeting, we got the letter stating there's gonna be the rent increase. And as far as I know, Frac was not involved with that, so I'm not sure how that ended up happening. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, after Zigante, we have a Bob Quinn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Miss Vice Mayor and council members. Thank you for having this hearing. I've been a resident of the Franciscan Park since, uh, two thousand and twelve. My family and I moved there. Uh, during that time, I've watched, uh, a dedicated band of people fight for the residents, and, uh, we've gone to court, we've won in court. We've got a court order to transfer the park to the residents. We've, uh, our attorney has complied with every documentation request. City Attorney Zimmerman, I believe, has all these documents. What the residents need to know, what we're asking the council, is what do we have to do next? We've suffered under this management corporation for more than ten years. We've lost neighbors and friends due to rent increases and, uh, being forced out, being bullied, being intimidated by the management team. We're asking for help. We've asked for help for years, and it's time. We've done all our compliance. We've done our due diligence, and now it's time for the city to do their work, to help these people. We are retired, disabled, low-income residents. Uh, we're supposed to be watching out for the little guy. We need that help. So I'm asking for another steady session. Let's look at the documents that the little attorney has. What is left to do besides sign off on? If there's something more to do, tell us, because it's just been going on longer than it should be necessary. If we were a big corporation, we would probably have more doors open to us. But this is our forum. This is what we're, this is the, the yard that we are working with. So we're asking for your time and your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Quinn.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for having me here to speak to you again about this matter, about the water problems at the park. Uh, this morning, Sonny Kenny Kenny and I went to the San Mateo County Tax Assessor's Office, and we tried to find out why our, uh, property taxes are now at six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year. And just, uh, a few years ago, they were at two hundred and eighty or two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, we found out, one of the reasons why our taxes are higher is because there is a two hundred and forty thousand dollar excessive water and sewer fee usage ta- uh, fa- fee or fine attached to twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, when these pictures were taken. Uh, also, they have moved that fee over to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for twenty sixteen, and this did not occur in twenty sixteen. And I brought this up time and time again. We were promised, uh, an investigation into, uh, the water problems by David Canepa, and the council approved it. We were also promised an investigation by Glenn, uh, Mayor Glenn, uh, Sylvester, and the council approved that. So we would like to have this investigation, and also about these taxes that are just creeping up out of sight. Uh, it's, it's unacceptable. It's taking money out of our budget. We don't understand why it's not done, and we need to get answers. Uh, we went down and talked to, um, the, uh, chief, uh, uh, principal appraiser, uh, Preet Sekan, down there in the assessor's office, and he said that he would do an investigation into these anomalies in the taxes, which are going up and down. which are going up and down like a ther- uh, thermostat in a, in a, in a hot and cold building. And, um, uh, he agreed that he saw problems with these, uh, uh, computations for several tax years, and, uh, the Franciscan, and a large release of water occurred, and that also raised our taxes. So he is going to initiate an investigation. We would like you also to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. All right, uh, the last card I have on this is from Mr. Sonny Kenny Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, honorable council members, Pat Martel. Good evening. I feel like enough had been said and reported to this authority. But there is a final message that we want to share with you. In our meeting with the Link Housing, they came down to the Franciscan. Chief Executive of Link Housing announced this. On my question, why is the property tax so inflated from two-hundred thousand into six-hundred thousand? This was what she said, Sandra Fomera Larson. More rich people are coming in. More poor people are going out. Ms. Martel, can you please take a look? This was going on at the Franciscan. By admission of the owners themselves, the very entity who should be watching and making sure that our poor citizens are protected. As a matter of fact, the Franciscan should be welcoming more citizens from the poor sector of Daly City into our community. This validates what Bob and everybody had been saying. Large homes are coming in on low-income sites. By their own admission, they confirmed it. Folks, it's time to get rid of Link Housing. The only solution to this is to follow the court order, transfer the ownership. We have the right to that. And I would like to invite Mayor and Vice Mayor Manalo, since you are with the Affordable Housing Committee. Please, hold the meeting with us at the park, or we can come here at your conference hall. Link Housing had come to misinform the residents and make you folks look bad. They are blaming you for the delay and this toll in the transfer. Please, please come, or we can come here and make the Franciscans understand that do- you're doing your best to follow the court order. This is
Okay.
an abuse to the elder language. Our supervisor stated very clearly here. It needs to stop, Mayor. Link Housing needs to be kicked out.
Okay, Mr. Kenny Kenny.
Stop from asking for help. We are here asking for action.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards on the topic. All right, next item on the agenda is appointments. Any appointments?
Yes, I have an appointment. Uh, I would like to reappoint my Pauline Fong for, um,
Arts and Culture.
Arts and, I, I should've done it last time, but I, I was ill, so, um, I, I would make that motion now.
Uh, so for Pauline Fong Martinez?
Martinez, yes. To be reappointed. I spoke to her. She wants to do it, and so, yes, uh, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right.
After that Lights Festival she put on? Absolutely.
Okay, we have a first and, uh, motion to appoint Ms. Pauline
Reappoint.
Reappoint, um, Ms. Pauline Fong Martinez to the Arts and Culture Commission. It's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, well, all those in, let's take, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose?
No.
Uh, okay, I think it's best that we do a roll call in this particular, uh, instance. Roll call, please, on the, uh, motion.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes, and, and before, I, this is a woman who has stepped up and done magical things with that commission. And anyone who attended that Lights Festival that we had here?
Uh, Ms. Christensen? A, uh,
This is a
Ms. Christensen?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Ms. Christensen?
I just will finish in just a second.
Ms. Christensen?
Yeah.
The proper way that we go about this is, we have a first and a second. So before I call for a roll call, if you would like for me to rescind the roll call, we can go into discussion.
I'm not discussing. I'm going to finish my sentence, and then we'll vote. I should've just, just talked first and then voted.
All right.
Uh, I just think, oh, do not even start with me.
Order, please.
What are you gonna, wanna stick the police on me? Because I'm not stopping until I finish my sentence.
We will, if you would like to resc- uh,
No, I would not. I would like to finish my sentence.
This is a roll call, Ms. Christensen.
Yes, it is. And I most firmly vote yes, because Pauline Fong Martinez is the absolute best person for this job.
Time.
You can ask me from now until the cows come home.
Okay, Ms. Christensen.
You heard my vote and my finish of my sentence. You may carry on now, emperor.
All right, thank you very much. So, your vote, Ms. Christensen?
Didn't you hear it?
Ms. Christensen, for the record, your vote, please.
I've said it twice now. For the third time, an emphatic yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gangona?
Uh, before forwarding yes, um, I'd just like to say that, um, one of the reasons why I chose Pauline was because she's graduate of the, uh, of the Citizens Academy.
All right.
And I thought it was a great opportunity for
Please, we are in the motion of receiving a vote. The proper way would be a discussion before we vote.
Um, Glenn, uh, just for your information, oftentimes, what we'll do with Robert's rules is we'll relax them because of the colloquy that we have here. I know that because of your inexperience, you wanna go by the, the letter of the, of the rules, but oftentimes, what happens is, our practice here is not so much to, to the letter of the rules of, of Roberts. And what happens is, when you're the mayor, oftentimes, what you'll do is you'll relax those rules in an effort to get your, your, your colleagues to speak, because that's what they want.
Thank you, Mr. Gangona, but if we want to engage in discussion, I would be more than happy to entertain discussion before calling a roll call.
Yeah, but you have to be consistent in the way that you apply this rule. Because I have found that in the meetings that you have run in the past, that you've allowed comment.
I'm not looking for a dialogue, Mr. Gangona.
I'm asking for consistency. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Hey, my, my vote is yes on Pauline.
Very, thank you very much.
Mr. Brian Ventura?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
No.
Mr. Sylvester?
All right, to the city attorney, and this is in order to come up with a vote. If I were to vote to abstain, what would happen?
There would be no vote. Because you would, if, if the votes were to come as a two-two vote, there would be no vote.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Then my vote is to abstain at this time.
I have a question for the city attorney as well. Um, if, in the, in the event that, that, uh, a, um, an appointment fails, a reappointment, would it be true to say that that person stays on, um, indefinitely? Would that be true?
Well, is her term up or not?
Supposedly.
Her term is up.
Yes, but if it's, if it's a situation where, 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 uh, I can't get her reappointed, she stays in, right?
Yeah.
That's been the his-
Right?
Well, okay, technically, if they serve a term, then their term is up.
Yes.
And so the history is, yes, we allow them to stay, but the
Until we can get another person on, right?
If a vacancy would, if, if
We
So their term is
We have had people stay on commissions without reappointment for like five or six years.
Right.
And if people here knew the history of that, because they were actively involved, they'd know that.
That's true. So, all right, she's still on.
I have a question then. So
It's okay with me.
What if, uh, someone else were to make a nomination for appointment to that commission? Then she would be on, right?
Okay, so, let me give you a real strict reading of this, okay? So technically speaking, the way the code reads, it, okay, by practice, we've allowed them to stay beyond their term. And because this council does not take any affirmative steps to remove them, we keep them on there, okay? But because there's a term on this, technically, their term is up. That's the real strict reading of it. Um, unfortunately, that's the way it is. So, a vacancy would, I don't know when their term is up. Unfortunately, I don't have that information, but if there's a specific
Meetings until, until they're, until they're
We've allowed them to stay, to attend meetings, yes, but if we, if their term is written in the code, their term is up. And so technically, there's a vacancy. And I defer to the city clerk, because I know that you have to record those vacancies.
It is recorded on eleven.
And Mr. Gangona is the only council member who can make that, appoint people for that position.
That's not true at all.
As it's his position to do so.
We've eliminated the practice of deferring. That's, there is no law that says that, that, that's to be the case?
Well, uh, my understanding is, is that each one of us has one appointment. Would that be correct?
Each one of the council members has a nominee that they appoint, yes.
And in the event that I can't get my nominee passed, that person stays there until such time as they're removed, right?
The strict reading is that their term is up.
Thank you.
And it creates a vacancy.
My question is, if at the next council meeting, a council member decides to nominate someone for that position, any of us can nominate that, another person?
That has not been the practice.
I'm not saying it has, has, I'm not asking you whether or not it's been the practice. I'm asking, is that legal to do?
Crazy.
Is there a law that, 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 that says, do we have an ordinance or a resolution that limits, uh, one council member's choice? Or can the whole council decide an issue and make their own separate nominations?
Okay, so the council appoints the commissioner. The council, and again, I have to defer, because this has been a practice before my time. And yes, we allow, just like a courtesy to the other council members, that they nominate someone, and the council has to approve it. But it is the entire council that, that, uh, votes the commissioner in.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Would you kindly research that for us and provide us, uh, the, uh, the code section for that? And what I gather right now, that the term as factual basis, the term is expired.
As reported by the city clerk, there is a vacancy, yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other appointments to board commissions or committee appointments? Okay, hearing none. Next item is reports. Uh, council committee report. Item number twelve. Anyone?
I have, I have, thank you. Um, I do have a council committee report. I, um, requested a DC station committee. I know that, you know, there's been, uh, dialogue around, we need to make sure that there's continued revenue in Daly City. Uh, and I thought it was very important for us to see where we're at with, um, the DC station. And also just making sure that, um, you know, all of our leasing is up within that development. I'm happy to hear from staff that there is going to be an RFP out at the end of March um, to look at, um, a possible hotel, um, right by Daly City, um, bar, right? So you s- you notice right where, um, like the come is, and then there's, um, actually a parcel of land right there. And so we're looking to put out a, um, you know, RFP and market out for that parcel, as well as two other parcels, um. And in June, the council will deliberate, um, and interview, as well as make sh- make a decision possibly in July. I think this is what we need, you know, it's really great to see that the staff has been working hard to see these come into fruition, because it's really important for us to have, um, a revenue stream and see a hotel, um, in Daly City, as well as market the other opportunities, whether it's office building or with retail on the ground. We, we are in a special place. Daly City is in a special place. And, um, to have, um, more revenue streams for our programs is so important. And so I'd like to give that update out to the community.
Okay, any further? I do have, uh, two council meeting reports. One is the Joint Protection, JPA, San Mateo Medical Services Group, to which I attended. I learned a lot about our emergency ambulance service, which, uh, the response, since two thousand nine, the response time has been twelve minutes. And because of our JPA, it's down to eight point nine. They, uh, have standardized training, and they do have the requirement on each rig, which is about the same, so that there's no discrepancy. On the eighth, I was sworn in as the San Mateo Mosquito and Vector Control District Trustee. And with me, there was Ms. Christine Fuller, who's in the audience. She was Daly City's previous representative for ten years. Ms. Fuller has been a mentor for me along the way, and I was so happy to see her there when I took my oath-taking, I've taken. I thank you very much, Ms. Fuller, for your service to this city and for representing our city. I, uh, it's a lot to learn. Uh, something that I did learn, they picked up some ticks in San Mateo, and they even came up as far as San Bruno, which would be tested for Lyme disease and relapsing fever. Uh, we are now going to advertise, and they will be coming to the Bart and Caltrain stations, uh, advertisement in order to, uh, reduce, uh, knowledge about mosquitoes and the reduction of, uh, West Nile and provide a link about W- West Nile virus. So those are the, uh, two committees that I attended, uh, the past couple of weeks. Any other council committee reports? All right, uh, moving on to city council reports. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, so at the, I think, two council meetings prior, Ms. Martel, I asked about, um, the, uh, ERAF dollars, and you said that you would have a report for me, so, um, I
We will be providing a report during our mid-year budget review.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything further?
Yes.
Ms. Christensen?
I have to say, I am very upset about the lack of courtesy towards a member of our community who has given selflessly and in a magnificent and professional manner. This is, per, appointing people's commissions, it seems that others seem to think this is political patronage. This is how you pick your friends and put them on committees, and you take good, honest, hard-working people and kick them off? Because what, you don't like them? I mean, this is ridiculous. It's happened before. When people are willing to step up and serve this community selflessly for no economic benefit, all they do is work hard and celebrate the city, all of us up here should be saying thank you and not refusing to continue their participation, uh, in, in that same way. I, I'm disgusted by the whole thing. Um, a- and to use this form to humiliate someone like that, I find it despicable. And to interrupt me when I'm making a simple statement, because you have the authority of the gavel. If you had attended meetings for the last twenty years, like the rest of us have, you would know that frequently, a council member, as part of their vote, will make a simple two- or three-sentence statement. And that has always been the practice on this council. And that has always been the practice on this council, whether it was me who was making a comment or whether it was Carol Clatt or Adrian Tissier or Al Talia, you know, we all had the opportunity to do that. That's all I've got to say. I'm very upset by what happened here this evening. The lack of respect for the community and for my right to speak.
Thank you. Any other council? Voice? No? Alright, I have a few. Um I attended, this is not a committee, but I've attended a few meetings, one is with the Brisbane School District. They have a piece of property here in Daly City. I met with the superintendent, two trustees, and the principal of the Brisbane School Board. I am impressed with the Daly City's partnership, which also provides activities for kids for the Brisbane School District and the unique learning environment to enhance and stimulate self-worth and respect for others. Another meeting I attended was the Bay Shore Seniors Citizens at Lawson Hall. I attended a meeting there to learn of their concerns, traffic problems, construction issues, and spoke with them about new ideas. Also became a member. Um On the third, I visited Bay Shore Elementary School in a program called Reach Across America. There with other professional uh wrestlers and folks throughout the community, I read to the children and with other community members. And they even traveled from as far as Hillsboro. I have a request. We do have commissioners that serve on various commissions here in Daly City. Some of these meetings last anywhere from ten minutes to over two hours. What I would like to request is that any commission meeting, since these folks are not being compensated, that if it lasts over two hours, that they're provided refreshments and snacks. Item number two. Vice Mayor Manalo, I wanna say thank you so much for bringing up the issue about immigration. Your recent immigration reform program with the help of city staff that was put on here in chambers was indeed a success. You definitely showed that going out and working together with other people to get the resources, to get things done without costing the city of Daly City any money is to be commended. I would like to have a commendation made for both the instructors, the attorney, and the other person who put on that free forum pro bono to receive a commendation from the council. Also, when we passed that resolution, we received a letter from Assemblyman Phil Ting. I just received a letter from Senator Scott Wiener that I would like to be added to the archives supporting our resolution that we passed. And putting everything all together, I wanna thank you, Vice Mayor Manalo. So I'll provide the letter. Uh, item number four. It has been a pet peeve of mine to provide transparency for all the constituents and the citizens of Daly City. As of last week, every entire committee and who serves on that committee is on our website. So that the citizens can go to that website link, you can find out when the meetings are, and you can also attend those meetings, especially the regional committee meetings. So I just wanted to provide an update in that regard. Lastly, we approved the minutes from February of uh last month. And we had a concern about video versus summary and the recordation of the minutes. I would like a special request to be added into the minutes to consist of municipal code two point zero four point zero three zero that indicates, add a special request of any council member, the remarks made shall be clearly typed written and provided on the minutes. So what I would ask is that we include municipal code two point zero four point zero three zero to be placed in the next month's minutes verbatim, and this is a special request. And with that being said, that's all I have. At this present time, I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of the following. Of Florence Ann O'Rourke, and this is a request from Councilmember Christensen and Rudy Rosendo Valeros, and also from Councilmember Christensen. And um, Ms. Christensen, please feel free to speak on your vote.
I imagine many out there watching tonight um knew Florence Ann O'Rourke. Uh, an amazing woman. Uh, smart, passionate, energetic, beautiful smile, cute little dog. Um, frequently at the Dolger Center or on the Dolger Center properties. Um, when we look at back at Florence Ann's job, actually, people who knew her very well, especially in her youth, her nickname was Babe. That gives you an idea that she was definitely a beautiful woman. She began her career in the U S Treasury Department and in her later years worked in the fields of epidemiology and social research. She was a very proud graduate of Saint Paul's High School. And I wanna say how much we are going to miss Florence Ann uh and her enthusiastic personality. And and our deepest sympathies go out to her daughter Erin and to all of the O'Rourke family. Um, it was a real honor to know Florence Ann. Um, thank you. And Rudy Rosendo Valeros. This man was um an active member in the original Daly City Protective Association neighborhood. He's one of my neighbors. Um, he loved his family, he loved his church, and he loved his neighbors. If you were walking on the street and had a perturbed look on your face or seemed concerned or were walking with a cane that day, he was the person that would come out and talk to you. And if you had a problem, he would listen and he would listen and he would listen and then he would say, what can I do to help you? Not giving unsolicited advice, but asking what can I do to help? Um, he's going to be tremendously missed by his neighbors and his family and our deepest sympathy go out to all of them. Thank you.
I have one.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Christensen. Mr. Braina Ventura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I neglected to add it on to your um adjournment list, but if I could, I would um So, I have one best friend in 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 my life. And a- apart from my wife and my son, I have a friend that I've known since I was fifteen years old. And uh, his uh, his father passed away uh just last week. And he's going through quite a bit uh right now. And I know he's hurting and and Dave, if uh, if you're watching this meeting, um I want you to know how much uh we loved your dad and um I know you're going through a lot, but um I think he's in a better place. Uh, he was suffering and uh may he rest in peace, Eddie Young.
Thank you, Mr. Braina Ventura. Alright, we have two additional, and these are either employees and or their immediate families. We have a Cam Koopan- Panja, which is related uh to, is Anna Cole's mother-in-law, who uh is a city clerk office employee. And we have a Jose, Jose Montenegro. He's Police Officer Santino So- So Yonko's grandfather. So, we will adjourn this, the meeting in memory of these individuals, and I request a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.